This is the March 28th, 2023 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the secretary's report from January 31st. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions in those minutes? If not, we just need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second item is the budgets. So you haven't seen it in about two months, so it does look a little different, which is as it should. You'll see salaries were 73.2% spent out, which is expected. Due to turnover, we most definitely will have an overage in the tech line. We've had that vacant children's room assistant position since the very end of December. And then some additional turnover, so there will definitely be an overage of approximately $7,000 at this point. My estimation could be wrong, but that's my estimate is around $7,000 in that line. And you'll start to see it lag behind the library tech line. You'll start to see lag behind the director and patron service associates line a little bit more, I think, as time goes on. We do also have a little bit of a short line, a shortfall in the custodian line of just a couple hundred dollars, which was just, I think, some poor math last year on my part. So that'll easily be covered by the overage in the tech line, so not at all concerning. But it's going to become more obvious as we get into the last quarter of the fiscal year, which seems impossible. And then I don't have any concerns in operating. Our materials line will be spent out within the next month or so, which is typically how it goes every year. And we'll begin spending state aid to meet our materials expenditure requirement. But other than that, I think everything is pretty status quo unless you have any questions for me. We're at 74.8% spent out, which three quarters of the way through is pretty down on the mark, 75% at three quarters.
You seem to be doing great with the energy, too.
Yes.
Seems like we should have spent more.
It seems like we should have. The bills have been a little bit higher this year than last year, but not so concerning. And this past bill was slightly less than last year's, at the same time last year. So yeah, I think we're doing fine there.
Yep.
And I'm just noticing the travel percentage didn't print, so I will fix that for next time. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that budget?
Make a motion to accept the budget.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to old business. Do you have an update on the FY '24 budget process? So I put this on here more just to highlight the fact that the finance committee voted unanimously for the library's budget request for FY '24, which includes the full-time children's room position. So it's great news that that's feeling very possible at this moment. You know, the Board of Selectmen still will be reviewing budgets, and it has to go to town meeting on May 22nd. Because if it goes through a town meeting, which is May 22nd, then on May 23rd, I'll be posting the position for July 1, so that we can get going on that process. So I really appreciate the finance committee's support. They've been very supportive to us for the past eight years that I've been here. And certainly this season, I know they're expected, you know, to be very conservative right now. So their support means an awful lot. So I really just wanted to stuck it on here just to be able to say that. And so that you know, in case you didn't watch the meeting yourself or couldn't hear it.
Yes, definitely. We do definitely appreciate their support. Did anyone have any comments to add or questions on that? Okay. And we don't need to take any notes on that one. Next is the snow removal. So I put this on the agenda because we had talked about the snow removal process or lack thereof for several meetings now. And luckily, we didn't have any snow removal this year. Who would have thought? But there still seems to be some disconnect as far as who's doing what, when, and how. And we need to fix that. We have to stay on top of that. So I plan to go and bring this back up after the budget season, because right now no one's focused on snow as we head into the summer. However, after the budget season and town meeting, maybe like the June-July timeframe, I want to put this back on the selectmen's agenda and go there and talk about some sort of a plan to be able to get that all set. We need to figure out who's going to be shoveling walkways, who's going to be, you know, taking care of the plowing. And most importantly, how that is being communicated back to Dina so that it can be filtered down to the staff. Because right now, there just is no, there still is nothing. And it's very frustrating. So I'm going to put that, like I said, June-July timeframe. I'll put that on the agenda. Did anyone have anything they want to add to that? Okay. And I will do that. Thank you. No problem. New business, upcoming holiday schedule.
So I wanted to just have the chance to make you aware that the library is opening for a half day on Good Friday per the AFSMI contract. So the part-timers are part of the AFSMI Town Hall contract. And per that, they get a half day for Good Friday. That hasn't impacted us since we've been open on Fridays, because there was normally an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that specified library holidays separate from Town Hall holidays. And the AFSMI members did not do an MOU this year. So when we dealt with something similar at Christmas time, I, you know, worked for like two months, as you know, with town administration to be able to close and get the staff paid for Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. And I just sort of fell off my radar to make a case for them to have Good Friday as a paid holiday, a full-day paid holiday. So we're going to open from 1:00 to 3:00 on Good Friday. There are signs on the doors. Our website has been updated. We modified the due dates with sales so that nobody has an item due that day. So if they come to return items, they can certainly use the book drop still, but they won't feel bad or concerned that their item was due and they can't get in the building. So just really put that on the agenda just to be able to give you a chance to update you on that. And, you know, I think the members of AFSMI know that they, you know, should be advocating for themselves and what they want when it's something like that, a Friday to open for, when we're only open four hours to the public anyway. Just seems kind of silly to open for two, but we're doing it on April 7th. And then we will be closed the full-day holiday for Patriots' Day on April 17th. There's that as well.
Is the AFSMI contract, is that yearly or is it every?
It's a three-year contract. So they just renewed that contract this past year.
So we still have two more years to go, right?
Yes.
So will we be able to do, or will they be able to do?
If they pull together to write an MOU, they will be, and then present that to the union and to town administration and get it approved, then they will be able to do that.
Just for the library?
Just for the library. So I, you know, I can only recommend that that's what they do and show them that that's what happened in the past when there was a different steward involved and make the recommendation. So like I said, I advocated hard, because we have never been open for Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve ever, so I advocated for that, just for the precedent of the library building, never having been open on Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve. But it just wasn't on my radar to advocate for this one, and then it was too late. So.
Do you know if the warding is half-day or is it closed at noon?
No, it's half-day.
It says half-day.
Half-day. And we go through that at Thanksgiving also, and we open for a half-day on Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving.
Because we don't open at 8:00.
Right, correct. But no, so it's not 8:00 to noon. It's just recognized as a half-day holiday. So it's not that language piece. But like, say, on the day before Thanksgiving is a Wednesday when we're open to the public for nine hours. Opening for four and a half hours to the public is totally reasonable to do, because a half-day for us, it's based on a nine-hour day open to the public. So four and a half hours is one thing. To open for two hours just seems rough. And again, our staff members only work four-hour shifts for the most part. Some of them are sometimes here for five hours and some for six. But our part-timers primarily are working four-hour shifts, which makes them very different from the full-time employees that work at Town Hall. And the majority of the people, as far as I understand, in that contract are full-time employees. So it is something that needs to be addressed by them as the paying members of the union. And I think I've taken it as far as I can with town administration. So I'm hopeful that they will act on that. And if not, then we'll be doing the same thing next year.
Who's the union rep for them?
For our staff is the custodian. So we'll see, but how it's next.
Stay tuned.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have, were you going to ask me something?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just thought of that, like, oh.
Any of the, any questions or anything on the holiday schedule, comments or anything? Okay, we'll move right along. Discussing a request to hold a private event in the pavilion.
So this hasn't come up before until now, but we did receive a request by email and then a follow-up by phone to use the pavilion for a private event in September. And I brought it to Jen before putting it on the agenda just to run it by her. And she just raised a couple of questions. You know, like you know, you haven't tasked me with writing a policy for the pavilion. Unfortunately, everything we do basically is policy-driven here, which is one of the reasons why we have this board, because it's your policies that, you know, you approve as the governing body. But you haven't tasked me with writing a policy for the pavilion. I certainly will if you will like me to, the same way we have one for the community room space and for outside groups to hold private events in the community room. But it's not like a question that can be a simple yes or no, because it immediately raises questions of, does a staff member need to be present? If it's off-hours, how do we get a staff member to be present? Are we required to have the building open for the bathroom even though they want to be in the pavilion? But is there some legality to having, you know, an available restroom on the property since we don't have any kind of outside bathroom? Will parking be an issue? Would there be a fee involved? I mean, there's a lot of questions that come up. So it's not a simple, oh, yes, sure, you can do that, or, oh, no, you can't. And that's why we, if you would like to entertain the idea of doing something like this, then you need to have me write a policy, review what other libraries do with their outside spaces, which from what I understand, a lot of libraries do not allow usage of their outside spaces by private groups. It's just for the library's purposes or the town's purposes. But that doesn't mean you have to follow it that way. So I wanted to put it on here to get your take. And I know Jen has some thoughts on it, and I'm sure she'll share it with you. But, you know, the rest of you are welcome to obviously contribute to that as well.
My thoughts were, first of all, the liability, that was the biggest thing. What are, what are the town, I mean, for the town? What are we liable for if someone falls off of it? If something, you know, something, if it gets damaged or what? That was the first thing that I thought of. And then, you know, like we had talked about the parking, I mean, what, who's going to be here?
Even the staffing, right?
Right, the staffing.
How we got it work, we're stretched thin as it is.
And even if we weren't, like, what if it's a Sunday? Or is someone supposed to be here the whole time? And then, like you said, then we have the bathroom. Do we have to monitor, like, they shouldn't be coming into the rest of the library. I just felt that it wasn't, I just, in my opinion, I didn't think it was a good door to open. I just think we should just, absolutely.
We had a lot of experience with this for the community center. And we eventually had to stop doing it because too many issues. And probably the worst one is the fact that people may want to use the building on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday or an evening, the facilities. And if you're not open, like you said, that means someone has to be here. I'm sure you need to have bathrooms open. And it just, all the things you said. One of the problems we used to run into is people in the building with a volunteer who would volunteer to be here. And then they start doing things they shouldn't be doing, like breaking the rules of the building. And who's going to reprimand them? Or it became a real problem for us, even though we used to rely on donations from people to use the building. They'd give us $100 for an evening or something. It became not worth it, right? So if my concern is all of that, I would vote, don't do it.
Well, is alcohol an issue too for this wedding? It's, it is a wedding, but it's not a reception. It's just a ceremony. So I don't think alcohol would be a concern in this case. But then that does open up the door, too, for another event. And if you don't have anyone here monitoring that anyway, how do you, how do you know if it's here or not, you know?
Right. And now we're talking about like, and who pays for all that? We have all the costs and things involved.
People used to use the gazebo at the Town Hall complex.
Oh, really? Okay.
I wonder what they did there.
Yeah.
We just, we did it for my daughter's wedding. She, we went there for pictures and we made a donation or something.
Right. And it wouldn't matter.
It wasn't for her wedding. It was just for pictures with, you know, the trees and the gazebo and whatever. But there was nothing. It was just donation, you know, donate.
I can see her pictures. I mean, that would make sense, because you're, you know, it's not that many people. You're in there.
It was just the wedding party and maybe a few other people.
Right, 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 yeah. I mean, it's flattering that people would like to use our pavilion, because it's beautiful and it's great. But I just think that that just opens up canons. So we need to take a vote on whether or not we're going to move forward with Dina creating a policy or writing a policy to use the, or we're just going to?
I don't know if your vote should be so much about the policy, but maybe that you're not having outdoor. Like you were voting to not private. Just because you may want a policy at some point that states we do not authorize the use of.
Right, okay.
Make a motion that at this time, we would not let people, allow people to use the facilities.
Outside.
Outside.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have library legislative day. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I still have one. The retitling of the Patron Services Associate job. So not all of you were on the board, or most of you weren't on the board back in 2016. There used to be a director, assistant director position. And that was eliminated by the board in 2016, and it was replaced with this Patron Services Associate position. What I would like to do is just change the title of the job, not the job itself, from Patron Services Associate to Patron Services Supervisor. The job is supervising other staff, and it's supervising what happens with patron services. That's a key function of what they do is supervision. And that's already written in the job description. And, you know, as you, I believe, are all aware at this point, there is a union that is being formed for department heads and other people who are not part of the AFSMI union. This position is in the new union, and I feel like changing the title would just give it a little more weight in terms of negotiations with the union going forward. So.
It also sounds better.
It does. I mean, at the time that we were developing the new job, I worked with the former Executive Director of Sales and kind of outlined exactly what I had in mind for the position. And she said, "Sounds like you need a Patron Services Associate." And where she came out with the term "associate," I'm not sure, because I don't know of any other job that has that title in the state. But it seemed like a great fit at the time, because it encompassed everything we were looking for. But, you know, there is so much that goes on supervisory-wise with the position. So it just gives it a little more way to think going forward. So because that is in your purview to change. And again, it's not changing the job description at all or the expectations on the employee. It's just changing the title.
Would you want to go back to Assistant Director? Or is that problematic?
I think it's problematic for a lot of reasons. This is a very small library. You know, the Assistant Director, when he came on board, was doing the role of the director, basically. So the director wasn't managing the budget, wasn't doing the ordering, wasn't doing personnel, wasn't doing payroll. That's all things that a director of a small library should be doing. And that's things that the Patron Services Associate, that's not written in that person's job description. So that would mean a rewrite of the job description, and it would mean the person who's in that position being willing to take on those responsibilities, and they might not be, or they may be, but they might not be. And then, or they may be, and they might not get anything for it, monetarily-wise. So I just don't think, there's no other library this size in the network that has Assistant and Assistant Director, unless it's also an Assistant Director slash Children's Librarian or an Assistant Director slash Reference Librarian. It's not just an Assistant Director for a library of our size. So I would steer clear of it for that reason. That's my recommendation to you. I mean, I think the board, you know, back when they were dealing with it in 2016, they very specifically didn't feel that position was necessary with, when you have a director. I think also it was born of the fact initially that the director was a part-time position initially in Acushnet, it wasn't a full-time position. So once that became full-time, probably didn't need an Assistant Director anymore. You needed it when the director was, you know, like an eight-hour-a-week position. But anyway, that's, I mean, that's my understanding of the history of why there was an Assistant Director.
Thank you. Your vote is a difference.
And then, you know, the person who is in this position, we've discussed this very thoroughly. And I think we both are happy with this, with this title change. And hopefully you will agree.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Anyone else? Okay, then we need a motion.
Make a motion to change the title from Associate to Supervisor?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Now move on to the update on library legislative day.
So I wanted just to highlight the fact that we've had, I mean, this is the first time that legislative activities have taken place in person in a while. This is the first year in a while for that. And it's always been important, but for some reason, this year it seems especially important. Everything that's on the Mass Library Legislative Agenda, which is put out by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And I gave you all a handout. I attended the Sales Legislative Breakfast back in January. And then I attended Library Legislative Day at the State House earlier this month. That was on March 15th. I got to meet with the Acushnet's representative, Representative Schmidt, at both. He was at the breakfast and he was at Legislative Day. Oftentimes, we don't get to see any legislators from this area when I go up to the State House, because they're not in. But he was in, which was great. And he even joined myself and other librarians from Sales for lunch with Representative Cabral from New Bedford. So it was great that, I mean, it just felt very engaging. And I really wanted to highlight that to you all, to show you that your representative seems to really care about the community and what's happening and what concerns entities in the community might have. And we do have a few concerns this year. I mean, fortunately, we're not dealing with this directly here in Acushnet. But I'm sure you all know, just from reading the news or hearing the news, in this area, not in Acushnet, but in this area, and there's a big drive to ban books from some local schools in the area, and that's made headlines, so you didn't have seen this. But it's happening nationwide and is a very big concern nationally, because the books either are written by or tend to be about the LGBTQ plus community, or they deal with race issues, where they're written by Black people. So, and these are the books that are being challenged. And hopefully that does not make its way to Acushnet. If it does, I mean, we have a really solid collection development policy in place with a request for reconsideration of library materials attachment to it. So we do, we're good with that, which is important. But, I mean, a public library's reason for being is to support all members of its community. We don't tell you what to read. It's not what I want to read that I'm telling you you have to read. It's, you know, like, the librarian isn't supposed to show any bias when purchasing materials. It's supposed to be something for everyone. We really pride ourselves on that here with how we develop this collection. And we do offer a very welcoming space for people who do feel comfortable coming in and getting material that they need and want. So that's a big issue on the state level right now. Also accessibility for all, so increasing the state budget so that the Perkins Talking Book Library, and there's also a similar library in Wister, they have material for people who are vision impaired, either blind or just with a vision impairment and other accessibility issues. And they do share their material with the rest of the state, which is great for small libraries like ours. So we want to see that funding is continued for those libraries. And there's also this like crazy thing happening right now with unfair ebook pricing and limitations on ebooks. And that's something that I think we ended up having a great conversation with Representative Schmidt about. And he ended up signing a bill that's now in the House for legislative change for this in Massachusetts. But I think it's like so important just as library patrons that you know, like, if you go to Amazon, let's say, to buy a book, a digital copy of a book, you get to keep that digital copy forever, and you've maybe paid like $15 for it or less. I mean, they do the dollar deals, they're giving them away for free. There's a lot of things like that that happen. When I go to buy it for Acushnet, to add to Libby, you know, the Overdrive Collection, I'm paying three times as much as a consumer's paying with our budget. And we can only keep it usually for a max of two years. Sometimes it's 24 checkouts or 26 checkouts. It's whatever the publisher puts on it. So that's why, you know, people think, oh, it's an ebook. It's, I'm going to get that and I'm going to, you know, have it forever. Or why do I have to wait for an electronic book? Like, you know, when you place a hold on Libby, it's because of this, because libraries can't afford to keep up with the restrictions that are put in place by publishers. So that's a big priority this year. There is a bill, H3239, that's on the floor right now, and they're discussing it. Hopefully, that moves in a positive agenda. But I'm bringing that up to you today, too, that if you run into Representative Schmidt and you introduce yourself to him as a library trustee, you can thank him for supporting H3239 and feel free to shoot him an email or anything also if you don't run into him. But if that passes, that would be a huge win for small libraries like ours and other, you know, even larger libraries that just cannot keep up budget-wise with these restrictions.
How does that even happen?
It's been happening all along. It's just gotten a lot worse. It's been happening all along, though, since the beginning of this whole push with e-usage. But it's gotten worse over the last three years for certain. I think that, you know, publishers will end up saying, the reason why that, you know, they think that it should be this way is because if we. they think that it should be this way is because if we one time paid $50 for something, one time, well, that would be in use forever for $50. And so they're losing money off of that versus, you know, if we are every couple of years expected to pay $50, and that's just gonna, that number's just gonna go higher, then they're still making money off of us. I think their fear is with libraries, they won't make money off of us anymore. But what, and they're saying that like a physical book can maybe only get like 12 uses, and then you're throwing it away and getting a new one, which I'm sure some of you who borrow books from us know that those things have gone out a lot more than 12 times.
That's true.
We try really hard to keep ours in really good condition. We have a staff member who's excellent in mending materials, so in that, you know, his return, she's able to, you know, if something's returned damaged, she can hopefully do something to it and don't have to buy a second copy. But my God, we have books on the shelves from the 80s that are still in use or before. And older libraries or other libraries have even older copies of things, which we see come through in delivery. So to use that as an excuse is just really an excuse on their part, I think, to make it. They're afraid of losing money, is what it comes down to. And, but it's certainly not fair to the consumer who would like to be a library user, but, you know, sees that their number 300-something in the shop and doesn't want to wait many months or several months, whatever the language is that Libby gives. You know, unfortunately, we're in a position, we also have hoopla, where there are no waits, there's a great collection on hoopla, so we can encourage our patrons who maybe can't find what they want on Libby in timely fashion to try hoopla, but not all libraries have that ability in their budgets. And just because we have it now doesn't mean we'll always have it. So, getting something like this to pass is, would be a big win. So, I really just wanted to highlight a few of the key things happening, just make you aware.
Is that about it?
Yeah. Great.
Is this a problem in Massachusetts or somewhere?
Oh, it's everywhere, it's not just Massachusetts. It's definitely everywhere, but Massachusetts is, other states have stepped up to try to do something also, and Massachusetts is one of the first to step up in the way that it has to try to put a stop to it. And I also let Representative Schmidt know that for a small library like ours, the State Aid to Public Libraries Program, as you know, is so important to us, because we use a big chunk of that to support our materials expenditure requirement. And so let him know that even though that's not really highlighted so much on the agenda, it is key for small libraries in particular, so. It just, I really appreciate his time and it was encouraging, I think, for me. And I've been every year that I have been able to go in person, I've been. But in the past, I maybe, I know one year I did get to see Representative Hendricks there, but for the most part, I'm not used to seeing a representative from Acushnet when I go, because I'm normally talking to their aides. So it was pretty refreshing that he was actually involved for this, so. Very much appreciated.
That's great.
Yeah.
Much love, Dana.
Thank you. And, oh, that's the other thing I wanted to say. So, we sat down and I was like, "Well, I'm just gonna make a plug for this," and started talking a little more eloquently than I did just now, it's the Dana camera. But, I was so excited when I logged on to the state website the night today to look at the bill, and he had signed on in support of the bill, which he did after speaking with us. So, also I think, you know, that made me feel very, very good also, so, anyway.
You can take some credit for that.
That's right, I am taking, I'm taking all of the credit.
Pass it. All right, well, we'll roll right into the director's report.
Okay. So I did the new format, and again, it's two months' worth of a report, so I tried to point that out so that people wouldn't be like, "What? Come here." But I also tried to just separate some of the sections to make it a little easier on myself, but also I hope it's easier to read this way, so if it's okay, I will keep doing it in this way. Just to make it a little clearer in my mind too, as I'm writing it. But a couple of things that I just wanted to highlight. I wanted to start with talking about the first-ever Sales Library Road Trip, which is going to be happening in April. We'll have more information on our website soon and on social media. We've got to do a press release, and we're going to also have, hopefully, some solid information about it in April's newsletter. But Sales, and this isn't an initiative we took on, another network did it and had great success with it, and some other libraries in Sales said, "Well, we can do this too," and then got the majority of Sales Libraries on board, which is great. But for two weeks in April, it's April 18th through April 29th, patrons throughout the state, or especially throughout the southeastern part of the state, will be encouraged to visit your local libraries, see the local sites. And if they do visit, they'll receive a map of all the participating libraries, which is pretty cool. And I believe all of the libraries have purchased some sort of stamp or special way to designate on the map that they visited that library. We have a red apple to tie in to Acushnet and apples, even though it's not apple season. But we did get, go with an apple. Sandra's working on a bookmark that will highlight things like the Apple Peach Festival, so that people who come here, maybe for the first time, will know that they can come back in September and visit Acushnet for Apple Peach. On the website that is being worked on right now for the road trip, the state's working on that, they have highlighted Acushnet Creamery there and also the Acushnet Sawmill, so when people come here, they can visit Creamery or maybe take a walk at Sawmill. So, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're planning some extra programs for that time period. We have Toe Jam Puppet Band coming on Friday, April 21st, which will hopefully, the weather will allow us to do an outdoor program. And another group, the Hot Club Cheese Roll, that's an adult concert, will be half, or it could be for families. That's scheduled for Saturday, April 29th, and there's still more coming. So, people who go to the website, which isn't up yet, so I won't give the name of it just yet, but it will be in the newsletter hopefully. If they go to that site, they'll be able to see what events we're holding and what other library events are going on, and hopefully, they'll come check us out.
What's that date again?
April 18th through the 29th.
That's pretty fun.
I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, we're looking forward to it.
How many, how many are on the map that are participating?
Oh, boy.
Roughly, well roughly, is it?
Uh, 30-ish.
Oh, 30, well that's good.
25 to 30, it's only a few libraries in the network that aren't participating, so.
That's pretty cool.
Yes. So I think it'll be, it'll be fun. So, more to come, and hopefully you'll stop by and get a map and maybe visit a few local libraries, see what's happening nearby. And I also wanted to mention, we still have the Boston Bruins Pajama Drive that runs until this Friday, the 31st. So if anybody has pajamas that they've been holding on to at home, the deadline's this Friday, so just get them in, and then Sandra coordinates with the local PACE office for pickup. I believe we have 40 pairs right now, about 40, so, which is great. And they will stay local, which is wonderful, so we appreciate everyone who's come in to do that. And other than that, I mean, I think you can see we've been pretty busy over the past four months. We've had some turnover, we do have two new staff members as of January, and in fact, one just started today. So, that's been keeping us busy, because, and I know I've said it before, people don't realize the training that's involved with new people. We just had an issue come up last week that people who have worked here for a very long time had never seen before and weren't sure, you know, what caused it to happen. There's so many like intricacies to what we do, I know it looks easy, but you're dealing with a computer, so the computer doesn't always spit back at you what you think it's going to, which we're no different to that here, so training people is certainly, is taking up a lot of time, as you can imagine. But we're doing it, and we're very excited with our new staff. We brought back the knitters group, and that's actually being done by, not by the library staff, but there's some volunteers from the community who are putting it on. We had 23 people come the first time, it's gonna be.
That's great.
I was there, it was a high end.
We've heard great things about it, and we've gotten a lot of questions since.
It was full, it was a full house, and they, online on Facebook, it looked like a lot of people were gonna need help. But that really wasn't the case, I would say 15 out of 23 knew just what they were doing. They had their little projects and they just sat there, and then in one corner. Is her name Haley?
Yes.
Okay, she was kind of helping people, and there were a couple other people with experience helping, but it was really funny. It was cute.
I think it's a neat community thing, I know, there's people of all ages who came, like young kids.
Always fun, always fun.
Yeah, so.
I'm in the church group and it's very small, but it's during the day, you know, people who work in there. It was funny to see that many people.
Yeah, well hopefully that just can be good, yeah.
All ages?
Yes, Margaret Tebs, is it, brought her two little kids, and there was one little boy, I think he was eight knitting with his grandmother.
Wow.
Yeah.
Which is nice.
Not too many teenagers, but that's not a library group.
Have you ever seen, is it Jonah's hands, the young boy can crochet? I mean, he'll sit here talking like this, and he's going and going and going. The things he makes incredible. Well, I have him on Facebook or something, so it comes up. But, he was just, they adopted him, and he was having problems and everything, and somehow he got into the crocheting, and it's incredible. Now he gets, he gets yarn from everybody, and, I mean, it's a big business that he's got now, the things that he makes and stuff.
That's amazing.
And he's only, well, I didn't even know if he's a teenager.
Wow.
That's crazy.
Well, it's the second Monday of the month, so. So, and any aspiring Jones out there, second Monday of the month, 6 o'clock. And they met for, like a little over an hour, I think, right?
I put this up when she came and it said.
Yeah, wrap it up. Yeah, so that's back, the Friends have been sponsoring a few programs recently, which have been really wonderful. There was a Ukrainian egg painting workshop here last night, the max was 15 people, and 15 people were here doing that. So we appreciate, as always, the Friends sponsoring these programs so that we can offer these free programs to the community, which is, which is really good to do. But other than that, unless you had any questions about this novel I wrote for you.
Can I ask a question about this?
Oh, okay, yes, I was gonna mention it, and then I just thought of my mind.
I had to read it three times.
The AFSMI staff, they have a sick time buyback in their contract. And that, the buyback was always paid for out of a non-library account, just a town account, the buybacks were paid for. And the interim accountant, in reviewing that, feels, and I do agree that this is the correct practice, that it should come out of the budget, that the, you know, the department's budget, not the town's, whatever this bank is that they were using. So that way you get a clearer picture of how much money is being spent by the department. I mean, if they have a vacation buyback, we pay for that, and that's always come out of the library's budget, so why is the sick time budget not coming out of that?
That makes sense though, I wasn't aware of it.
Okay, yeah, and I realize as I'm talking, I put that in, the vacation buybacks always come out of.
It makes sense to come back, but does that mean you have lost money to spend someplace else?
Sure. Well, in the tech line, we only can spend that for the tech, so it's coming out of the tech line. So I can't spend that on anything else, unless we had a shortfall somewhere and went and got it approved in June from the finance committee and town administrator that we could move that money from the tech line and spend it somewhere else. But there's a lot of restrictions on what that can be spent for. So, if, and again, if we did say we found, we ended up with a shortfall because somebody had a large buyback, which we did have somebody with a large buyback this year, quite a large buyback earlier this year, who had been employed here for six years. If that was going to negatively impact that tech line, then we would go ask for a request to transfer.
Okay, I think that makes sense too, to do this.
Yeah.
But then I wanted, like.
Right.
Right, what does that mean?
That was my thought exactly, too.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not money that we could just up and spend on something else. And if we did end up overspending in that line, they would then, we would ask for the money, and they would transfer it from another account to cover it. So it wouldn't be like we then suddenly had no money to pay the staff in that month. I'm glad you brought that up, I was going to, and I, so I'll just wait and see if anyone asks.
I put a big.
But I do think it makes.
I had to light it off.
Yeah, I do think it makes sense. That is, and it's something like, as I mentioned, like I was doing the reconciliation reports from November and December and couldn't get them to match up, and it was, you know, and then in January, and I was writing on the reports, "This isn't matching up and this is why." And then in January or February, when I did the January report, I finally heard, "Oh, yeah, no, that's because we're not doing it that way anymore." So now we know. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more.
Okay, yes.
One more, okay, ask it.
No, that's.
No, I just thank you for the final paragraph, your small request of us introducing ourselves to the new staff. I think sometimes we're rushing in and out ourselves and don't pay too much attention, but it's important for them to know who we are.
It is, thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
No, and it, I think it's just with the recent turnover, I stop and I realize, well, of course they don't know who, you know, I'll say, "Oh, Jen's coming in to sign something," well, they might not know who Jen is, and they might feel awkward saying, "Oh, by the way, Jen, I'm the new employee here." I don't mean to say, "Well, Jen out," but, but, if you're doing it, and even if you then, you know, if they're like, "Yes, we have met before, who cares?" Like, you know, like, it reiterates to them, you know, who you are, and I'm gonna make sure I talk to Kristen, that the offices with the Friends too, it would be great if they knew who, you know, the offices from the Friends group, you know, are, so that, just so that they're, I mean, not so that they treat you any differently. I mean, I think you know that our staff treat everyone is the same, but just more so so that they are comfortable when I'm saying, "The trustees are coming." They don't go into, "Oh my God, I don't know who the trustees are." So, thank you, yeah, it could be anybody. But thank you, and like I said, I do, it is partly a morale piece to me, because I think, you know, we're all still coming off a very trying time as a world, and I think a lot of people also have personal things going on, and so to keep the morale up, especially when people are only here 19 hours a week or less, can be a little tricky. So that, this will, I think, be something that helps, and I appreciate that.
And one more comment on your feel-good emails on Friday, I thought that was a nice.
That's a great idea.
Can we all get one of those?
Yeah. Just saying. When they're really good, I'll send them to you too. Sometimes there's very. I was hoping to get some, I was gonna send it. There's very cute pictures sometimes, so when there's a cute picture, I'll send it to you. So, sometimes I've noticed, like, you know, I'll read something very positive that's written about the library on Facebook, and, you know, I know not all the staff are on Facebook. So I'll like block out the person who's made the comment, but I'll share what they've said with staff, because it's an opportunity for them to hear that people outside of the four walls are saying how good they feel about coming here. So I do that sometimes, and I hope that doesn't stop anyone from writing positive comments. But, you know, it's, it makes me feel good when I read it, so I know, you know, it helps make the staff feel good too, so. And I did include January and February statistics on the same page, I forgot to point that out. And we're, you know, trucking along, recovering from, coming back from COVID. I think, you know, in January we dipped a little bit, but then we went back up in February, and that just could have been the timing of when people borrowed material, and we also had a very busy week during February of vacation, which is typical. So, you know, it's nice to see numbers going up, of course, and it's also nice to see our program statistics that were not existent a year ago. It's nice to see program statistics now, because we still hadn't resumed indoor programming a year ago. This is right around the time that we started doing indoor programming, so, last year. So it's nice, and also I will point out that in March, we already know, we've surpassed, we have our highest study room usage ever this past March, and we're not even at the end of the month yet, but we already know it beats other years, including before COVID. We had a lot of requests for people to use the rooms, which is great, so.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Words getting up.
Yes, which is wonderful.
That's awesome.
Feels good.
Yes. Yes.
Anybody have, any others, do you have anything else, Nancy?
No. No, don't be sorry. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? No one? Okay. So, do you want to try to set the meeting?
Yes. I was looking at Tuesday, April 25th. If that's possible at 4:00.
I can't do that day.
Okay.
But if you have another day.
We could do, can you not do that week or is it just that day?